Good evening. Thanks for being at the Thursday, March 28th, Northampton Planning Board's Public Hearing. We always begin our public hearing with any comments about issues that are not on our agenda. So if anyone in the public has a comment on an item that is not on tonight's March 28th agenda, feel free to come to the podium. And if there are no comments, we'll move into our 7:00 PM hearing, which is a continuation of a public hearing on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to standards governing large-scale solar arrays. The proposal is to eliminate the current provision against removal of more than 25,000 board feet of timber and create standards for large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays that result in more than five acres of tree removal. Before we open up our hearing, I do just want to mention that some of the folks here on the planning board were not able to be present at the February meeting. And those of us who were not were able to watch the video of that hearing, so we are up to speed on things. I do also want to enter into the broad record a comment from George Coet, who's not able to be here regarding this. He did read this language and wanted to indicate his support for the revised language. To summarize what was made available to us by the city solicitor, and I think, do planning board members have the copies that Carolyn just gave out? Okay. So we have an existing ordinance. There is an effort to do an amendment to that ordinance. There was discussion and input on that amendment. It was then further reviewed and further edited and changed. So there is some language that is newer than even the first round of changes. Broadly, there is a change to allow solar uses by right in a number of our residential districts. There is a specific change to allow ground-mounted solar by right in our industrial districts instead of allowing them by special permit. There were a number of restrictions that have been deleted from the ordinance, and Carolyn can enumerate those. But there are a number of bullet-in restrictions that were proposed to be eliminated. And then the most substantial change was to require site plan approval for large-scale ground-mounted solar in our RR, SR, URA, URB, and WSP zones. And some of the significant changes include or address projects resulting in more than three acres of canopy removal and require the submission of some technical scientific information about carbon that's sequestered, about the impact of the project relative to its benefits, about the type and relevant habitat that would be lost, and analyses showing carbon neutrality over the first 10 years of the operation. Things that did not change were points related to the percent of the property that would be protected from tree clearing. So that's 50% at least that would be protected from tree clearing and future development for the duration of a solar arrays operation. And then the requirement that beyond the first three acres of canopy removed, that stumps would remain. Would folks on the planning board like me to read any of these specific points again? Or questions?
Can I ask? I don't understand at all what you just handed out, Carolyn. I read it. Two pages, right?
Actually, it's front and back, so it's two and a half.
Oh, really? That's a lot. I looked at the back of the second page, and it was blank.
Wait a minute. So basically, what you have, so what happened was at the public hearing on February 11th, there was a lot of discussion from the public about concerns about addressing the removal of, at that point, it was proposed to go from a hard cap of the removal of 25,000 board feet of timber to something that's more understandable, so an acreage amount of timber that's removed. And in that proposal, the proposal was for a five-acre cap. And then there was a lot of discussion from public and city solicitor about, on the one hand, concerns about the fact that the ordinance wasn't addressing sort of a broader range of impacts that tree removal would have. And then, at the same time, the city solicitor was suggesting that without specific criteria by which the planning board could review or look at these modifications that relate to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, that an ordinance that sort of put any restrictions on solar may be challengeable in court because there's a gray area for these large-scale systems as to whether they're exempt from any restrictions throughout the Commonwealth. And so there's been a lot of debate throughout the Commonwealth about whether the large-scale systems really fall into that exemption that was created in the 1970s for homeowners to put solar on their roof. So what you have now, which I drafted a revision to what you saw to try to address public comments about impacts to the broader ecology and habitat, as well as to try to address some of the city solicitor's concerns about wanting to make direct correlation between what we're trying to, information we're trying to get, and also how to direct these solar installations as it relates to also protecting the community's health, safety, and welfare. Because that's the way you can stand on any kind of restriction is if you have a solid connection there. So he, and then at the same time, because there was concern that maybe five acres was too much, that I, the draft in front of you is reducing it down to three acres. And sidebar about that is, I came up with three acres because the two projects that we have that have been permitted, we have three projects that have been permitted. One at the landfill, two trees were taken down. So that was all on, you know, landfill. So the other two projects, on Park Hill, one on Park Hill Road, they got up to just under 25,000 board feet at two acres. The Ryan Road project was around three acres for 25,000 board feet. Now, they took many more board feet than that, but they're, based on their assessment of the trees that came down, three acres was about the number where they hit 25,000 board feet. So that's where I came up with the three acres for that. And clearly, there's a range. It depends on the type of trees there are. So that's where the three acres came from. And then the other big piece was sort of including this requirement that the applicant provide an assessment of the quality of the habitat that would be disturbed. And then address, or avoid those impacts to the extent they could. So they would have to bring that information to you so that you would evaluate it. And so that's what you have in front of you. Is that's sort of the bulk of the changes. And, you know, city solicitor has reviewed this and is comfortable with the language as it's presented.
What's interesting is, you know, we've gone back and forth about the difference between special permit and site plan. And it seems like this is a site plan, but then there's also this provision for the board to make a finding about impacts on health, safety, and welfare. So there's this added layer protection that seems to allow the board to ask for very detailed scientific information, evaluate that information, and then make a finding. So it isn't, as I'm reading this, this is not just a checklist of, yes, you met the front edge, you met the head. You know, that there is this sort of extra layer of review that if, you know, if the city solicitor is comfortable with that, I think that's very positive for us to be able to evaluate these projects. So before I open up the public comment, actually, we will open it up to public comment, but I do want to, should I read this into the record? We received one comment via email?
Yes, today.
Today. Do I need to read the whole thing?
No, you can summarize it.
Okay, so we did receive a letter regarding this proposed ordinance from John Skabiski in Hastings Heights in Northampton. And his recommendation is that we take a balanced approach and evaluate both the benefits of solar systems and the detriment to woodland and forest land. And so that's his recommendation. And that's it. We'll entertain other comments from the public. If you have a comment, please come up to the podium and tell us your name and your address.
Hi, everybody. I'm so short that it actually impedes my view of you. Oh, oh dear. Did I disturb something?
No worries.
I'm Lily Lombard. I live at 39 Monroe in Northampton. I am also chair of the Northampton Public Shade Tree Commission. I was here a month ago during the first hearing. And this feels a little deja vu in that at the time, the only difference is we had two or three days to consider the revised ordinance. And at that time, I personally had about three hours, which is why the room is not filled with other people because they just simply don't know that this is out there. So my request is very similar to my one before, which is a further continuation of this topic. I ask you to please not take a vote in favor or against this piece because I feel like there's always momentum that comes out of, you know, a decision that is made by a public body that makes it harder for the public to kind of insert their opinion on it at a later date. And I feel like at an early juncture, the public has a right to review this. I'm not judging at all the quality of this work. I think there's been really good thought inserted into the changes. And I'm glad to see that Alan is, you know, has, Alan and Carolyn have come up with a draft that seems to meet both the legal and the, you know, planning needs of the city. Having said that, I feel like there is a broad public body out there, the room was quite full last time you met, of people who are taking a particular interest at this point in time in the intersection between solar advancement and tree protection. That's played out especially keenly in Western Massachusetts, where between biomass production and solar production, there is tremendous pressure on our trees and our ecological systems. And we want to make sure that we are, you know, taking the time that we need to protect them as fully as we can. And, you know, Dave will probably speak as a member of Climate Action Now, whose subcommittee is dedicated to this very topic. So I iterate that I'm supporting this process. I know the public would love to weigh in. And I ask that you consider giving the public more time to look at this matter. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, my name is Dave Reutman. I live at 575 Bridge Road, Unit 92 in Florence, the Gables condominiums. Lily was able to get through to me at 5:00 tonight. My wife had already taken the car, so I walked in. And the reason I did is that this is such a critical issue. So what I'm going to provide in a minute or two or three is just some insights on why it's so important. I don't know how many of you attended the town hall that Senator Markey led a few nights ago. You know, everybody around the state looks to Northampton as a leader in this area. So your decision on this is really going to be very important. It's not an easy decision. You know that. We know that. The work that you did that was summarized by Ms. Mish and Ms. Pope, I think it's really good. I haven't had a chance to read it. Just heard about it at 5:00. I'm one of the co-founders of a group in Climate Action Now called Farms, Forests, and Food Systems Work Group. And so, as Lily mentioned, we are making a very focused study of this issue. We really see, we're so proud of living in Northampton. And because, as you've read in, you know, some letters to the editor, this is really a controversial topic. I'm so pleased that you reference in the new draft the importance of science-based. And it's just, it looks like it's in the right direction. I'll just close by saying I share Lily's concern. You will gain a lot. You will gain a lot in terms of the quality of the ultimate ordinance, the reputation as a leader of Northampton, and how you are experienced by your constituents, we, the citizens. I want to thank you for your serious work on this, and I look forward to learning of your decision.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment?
Okay.
A couple of them. We'll keep the public hearing open for some period of time as we discuss this. So a couple of perspectives. I was one of the people who wasn't able to be here but did watch the video. And, you know, there was some amount of interest. You know, I don't know that there was, from watching it, I don't know that there was an overwhelming amount of, you know, people who were here. There were, you know, eight or nine people who spoke.
The room was packed.
The room was packed. Of all of our 30,000 residents, you know. And so I do think it's an important issue, but, you know, I also, personally, I don't know that us voting on this tonight ends the process. You know, my understanding is that this would go to, so City Council, Legislative Affairs, and Community Resources. Is that right?
It's just now in Legislative Matters. So Legislative Matters won't take it up till they have a recommendation from the planning board. So this is, your piece is just recommending the City Council. Then Legislative Matters continued their public hearing, and that's April 8. Both of the continuations were noticed at that February 11th meeting. So that, you know, both of those were on the calendar from that point forward.
Right. Right. So, I mean, I just, I don't know that, I don't feel very strongly that if we were to make a recommendation to City Council, that does not end the process for the public. You know, that there are additional and multiple opportunities for people to be making their voices heard, which makes a lot of sense. The other thing, just, you know, to mention, I think, for everyone as the reminder is we know that, you know, what we're talking about in ordinance not, we're not talking about a specific project, you know. And so I think the most important thing was that 12-month look back and making sure that we're not in a situation that, with what happened on Ryan Road. That's, you know, kind of closing that loophole as quickly as possible is, you know, a gift that we can give right now and still be able to evaluate this ordinance and make amendments or changes. But, you know, to not, you know, I think part of our job and the job of zoning is risk mitigation and just making sure that we're not in any kind of situation where we might experience some, you know, some negative impact. What are other folks feeling?
That's how I felt during the last meeting is that the most important thing was the, was the look, the look back. And everything else, I guess I just, the other details didn't seem as important to me because I sort of felt like city government would take care of it because we have good city government. So that ability, and as you said, as soon as we can put that in, the better.
Lauren Fox.
So I wasn't here at the last meeting to watch the video.
On double speed drive.
Yeah. Voices are very high. So no, I, you know, on one hand, I'm wondering what's the downside of continuing this for a couple of weeks? I was surprised that there weren't, based on the number of people at first meeting, surprised that the room was a full again.
Right.
But that night, it was continued, and it was continued to tonight at a specific time. And so the knowledge was, the awareness was, could have been there for those who were looking for it. And to your, if this ended the process tonight, I'd be uncomfortable because I wasn't at the meeting.
Right.
You know, George is out, same thing. And, but it does, like, to your point, it doesn't end tonight. So, and there's going to be more opportunity for the public to voice their opinion. And I think it's a tight ordinance. It's based on the feedback. It's gotten tighter. And I don't object to anything in the manner in which it's written or the backstory behind the way it's written. So the only issue would be to continue or not. And I don't see a compelling argument to continue.
Sharon Fox.
I guess I feel similarly. I mean, yes, the room was very packed last time, and I was surprised to come in and not see it the same way this time. But I take your point that, you know, it was public awareness that this was the time of the continuance. So, I mean, but I also take Lily's, I take Lily's point as well, that, I mean, there is a sort of momentum that comes along. And if we've made a recommendation, it has a potential to take on a life of its own, and it might not if we continued it and sort of held it a little further back in the process. But I also feel really good about what's here, much better than I felt the comparison that we saw last time. And a little bit, Carolyn, I don't know if you can sort of speak toward this. I went back and re-watched a little bit of the video just to refresh my memory because it was long enough ago. And one of the things that the city solicitor--
So you were here and you watched the video.
Well, I, so many things happened between then and now. It was like, I just really couldn't, I needed to sort of bring it all back. So one of the things I understood the city solicitor to say was that part of the issue with saying five acres or 25,000 board feet or what have you was that that was sort of a random number. And why would that number be tied to the health and wellness of the city of Northampton as opposed to two acres, or 10, or five trees, or whatever? And so I'm happy to see that this threshold is lower and that there are a lot more specific data points on which we can analyze that. But I'm a little, I'm just sort of curious about how these numbers now do feel comfortable that three acres, that anything below the three acres wouldn't have a detrimental effect. I mean, you said that he's comfortable with those numbers. You described how they, how you came up with them. But I still don't exactly see the link between the three acres or the five trees 100 years old and why that's the, how that's--
Well, you know, I'll take the first one first. So, I mean, I think there's still a level of uncertainty about how this ordinance pans out. I think the city solicitor is still unsure whether it's feasible to require the stumps remain in place in order to keep the carbon in the ground. He's definitely not that comfortable with that. He understands the argument. But he didn't say that it was legally incorrect or untenable, I should say. So I think, I think he, I think at some level, a number to create a threshold is always going to be arbitrary. And, you know, 25,000 board feet was initially created because that's the state threshold in which you need to get a forest-cutting plan for any, for cutting. And so I guess, you know, he didn't really comment too much on that three-acre threshold. I explained sort of how I got to that number. And I think basically because it's, I think at that level, once you start taking down that number, that area of trees, which in fact is tied to, I mean, there must be a reason why the state determined that 25,000 board feet was a threshold for having to get a forest-cutting plan. So there is some basis for that. And then tying that to sort of a geographic area that we have seen already, I felt was a little bit more sure-footed than, you know, pulling out five acres. So I think at that, I guess I would say that, you know, the science behind potential impacts to habitat is there once you start, you know, taking down that much forested area in an area that has, I mean, obviously, most of New England was clear at one point, but it's all been reforested. Now we have different types of habitats, and it affects, you know, all levels of that. So I think that, I guess I would say, having it, tying it to an ecosystem analysis probably has a, I'm speaking for the city solicitor, and I'm, or trying to interpret maybe why he was comfortable.
Sure, sure.
Is that that you, I think, you can make stronger argument to the health, safety, and welfare of the community if you're destroying, or if the analysis shows that you're having such a big impact on, you know, the, all the multiple facets of the ecology. And then to speak about the, we did debate about the cluster. Initially, I said cluster. And you said that wasn't specific enough. It was a cluster. So I pulled five out of the air. That is completely debatable. It's just, I put it out there for you all to think about. But the idea is that you can't leave one tree standing alone and expect it to survive. That you need something around it because there's that synergy with a stand of trees. So, you know, five may be too little. So that number is definitely not based on any, you know, any solid research.
Well, I mean, so now, regardless, it seems like the best thing for, what I'd like to see is, you know, push, you know, approve this and, you know, give the people who want to debate this further at sort of the next steps, add information so that they can then look at the number five or, you know, whatever that is, and actually add to it or change it. I mean, maybe it's, maybe the number's two, maybe the number's 10. But the point is, is that I sort of feel like getting it going so that there's something constructive that, that people can actually edit makes sense to me.
And I will say, you know, City Council, I mean, the Legislative Committee, Legislative Matters Committee can decide that they want more information and continue their hearing. That doesn't, there's no clock ticking that requires the whole council to take action because the public hearing would still technically be open because Legislative Matters could deem it that way.
And didn't, when we were, when the rezoning, all the rezoning work was going on, didn't they also have the option, or don't they have the option, to kick something back to us? Is that a thing, or am I misremembering?
It is a thing. I mean--
Like if they decided that they wanted for us as a body to redeliberate, they could, in theory, send it back to us, right?
They could. Then we would, under that scenario, we'd have to re-advertise it. But they could at the same time keep their hearing open. So they can keep theirs open. We could re-advertise and have it back if they, I mean, and many times, they feel uncomfortable if they make substantive changes
Right.
without having feedback from the planning board. But I have no idea, you know, where this would go. And, I mean, I guess the bottom line is, I think you all should just determine whether you think this is, you're comfortable enough with this to make a recommendation on it. And if you're not, then you're not. And, you know, we can continue to deliberate. What would happen is, they meet once a month. So if you all felt you wanted some more information before you could make a recommendation or whatever you determine, then I would just send a message back to the Legislative Matters Committee not to put it on their April 8th agenda. And then they would punt it to their May agenda. Or if you didn't feel like taking it up in April, you know, they would then have to push it to their June agenda. So that's, okay.
Well, I think, based on what you guys said, I think discussion, you continue, right? And changes that have already been made since that meeting, I would just go forward with this.
Alan, questions?
Yeah. Couple things. First, something of interest. After the last meeting, I did just a bit of research on the trade-off between trees and solar panels. And according to this article, which was pretty mathematical, and the person seemed to know what they were talking about, but I have no idea really, says that solar is substantially more valuable in removing carbon. Not even close. Anyone can look at this if they want. Anyone can look at this if they want. As far as this ordinance, I read it over a couple of times, and I think it is so dense and complicated and above my ability to understand the issues, that I, I feel I would have to abstain on any vote having to do with it. It's, I mean, it's, it's just way over our heads. Going over some of the, just quickly, some of the language. An analysis of the structure and diversity of the canopy, mid-story and under-story. The, it deals with certifiable bernal pools. I think I know what a bernal pool is, I'm not, don't quiz me on it. Clusters, the issue that you discussed, Carolyn, clusters of five or more trees 100 years or older, I don't even know what that sentence means. Does that mean five trees constitute a cluster, or takes a number of, a number of five tree groups to constitute multiple clusters? I don't even know what it means. The next portion gets even more dense. Information regarding the abundance and distribution of habitats, historical information on the extent and quality of the habitats, analysis about fragmented, or that the habitat is not fragmented and that connectivity remains. I have no idea what that means. Gets into carbon neutral, I mean, I think I have a vague idea of what carbon neutral means, but somebody else might explain to me that I'm totally wrong. I just basically think it's, then it goes on to talk about the carbon offsets and short tons of carbon, I mean, short tons, tall tons, I don't, I don't get, I mean, I think this whole thing is so dense and over our head that I doubt that any one of us understands it, except Carolyn, maybe.
I think some of us maybe do, but...
And, and we're going to have to decide. I mean, a lot of this stuff, I would guess, you could have two professional scientists in the fields to present two totally different kinds of analyses, and how are we going to decide which is correct?
Whichever one is better explains it to us.
The one that...
I mean, I don't think that, just because something is, I mean, that's why you have an expert who comes to explain it, and if they can't explain it, then we can't vote on it.
And if you have two experts, we're supposed to be able to decide which one is more correct, and I think that's over our pay grade.
Well, you do that on a lot of issues. You have to evaluate what the information is giving you from two different perspectives.
This is much more scientific, and, and that's why you put in here that it takes a, a individual master's degree in wildlife biology or ecological science, because, you know, they probably should have a PhD.
So that, that language does come out of existing state statute for wetlands evaluation, and this analysis is, is pretty standard in the field?
Well, that goes to CONSCOM, though, but...
Well, no, I'm just saying that this, that this is not, I mean, this is an acceptable sort of way to evaluate credentials for someone who you are seeking scientific information from. So, I didn't make up the credentials, I guess is what I'm saying, is it's sort of a standard that, that is used in the Commonwealth, so. And then there's, from the research that I did, you know, this, this kind of analysis is pretty standard, going back, you know, looking from, you know, decades ago through different literature and EPA standards for evaluating ecosystems, and...
We're talking about the zoning orders.
Right, but so this information, you want someone to tell you what's the framework of this area that's being cut, and how, what kind of impacts will it, so you're going to rely on someone who understands those, those systems to say, well, you know, here's the type, here's the habitat that's there, if you cut this piece out, you're really going to have this whole other area that's going to survive and thrive, and overall, the percentage of impact is going to be so minimal, so, you know, as a scientist, I don't think that this is going to have a negative impact. So that's the kind of thing you want to hear. Or, the person might say, you know what, this is the most pristine forest in this part of Massachusetts, that it contains X, Y, and Z, it's going to have an impact on all these other habitats, and so maybe you want to, maybe the person wants to look at cutting in this other location instead of in this piece of it, so.
I'm sorry, one other question I have, in the last sub-paragraph E, net release of carbon, applicants shall assign RECs, renewable energy credits, to match or exceed, are those, can you balance those off? I mean, just one renewable energy credit equal...
Well, that's the thing is, it's a commodity, it's for sale across the country. So, that's how people, some people can say, you know, they're offsetting their carbon in one place because they're buying renewable energy somewhere else.
And it's just, I don't understand, is it, can you calculate whether the RECs will match or exceed the release of carbon? There are comparable calculations?
Yes.
Yeah?
Well, I would concur with Alan, there's a lot of this in here that I was like, way over my head, but I also feel the same as some of the other board members, that it's like, we have to get started somewhere, and I think we're a lot further away, a lot further, we're further away from where we started, and I think that's a good thing, and as long as, in legislative matters, the public, once again, can come and talk and maybe mold it in a certain way. If we completely missed something, or we really listened, I feel like, the last time the public was here, and there were a lot of them, and they took their time explaining their situations and what their thoughts were, I think we, you know, took our time listening, and I think it's reflective in here, though Lilly's correct that maybe they didn't get the time to check it out for more than a eight, 10-hour period, or whatever it was, but they knew it was going to happen again today, and not, people aren't here except for the two of them, or three of them, maybe, but I think, my feeling is that we, I would back this to move forward to the next level, and then see where it goes from there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very sensitive to people having adequate time to review something, but this is a page, I mean, we're not talking about some of our new site plans that come in that are 15 pages and full of amendments, you know, I mean, this...
But it's more dense and complicated than...
I think that may be true for some people, I don't think that that's universally true, and I think it probably isn't true for the people who care deeply about it, who were recommending some of this language. You know, I think that there are a lot of things in here that, that may not be familiar to some people, but for people who care about this issue, there are a lot of things that, you know, language that they see in many, many other places that they're very familiar with. I mean, you know, I think it's good that we are responsive to, you know, to the public in these things. I'm, I will say, I'm, I was surprised, I'm surprised that the city solicitor is okay with this language, because it does seem quite burdensome in some ways, you know, I mean, it's, but if he, you know, it would be interesting to see this level of detail required for single-family housing zoning. Tell me what, I mean, really, like, you know, we're not asking for this level of proof, so to speak, for other sorts of development, and I'm not saying that we should, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but it's interesting to me that, you know, he is, if he is on board with it, then I say, yes, let's continue to do it and use it, and send it, you know, send it to council and allow for another public hearing on it, but it is, it is very, very detailed, and it, we are also in a situation where it's possible after our three ground-mounted array projects, we may not see another one, right? I mean, could, but, you know, it's, you know, this certainly isn't going to result in a new project, so, it's, you know, we'll see. I mean, maybe, maybe there are some in the hopper, but, you know, we just don't know until, until credits are released, but, but I would feel comfortable moving it, moving it forward at this point. And Alan, I think to your point regarding our board making a finding, you know, we do, when we're doing site plan reviews, and especially special permit reviews, you know, we're reading those stormwater analyses, or the traffic impact analyses, or some of us are reading them, and, you know, and sometimes they may be very technical, but it's, it is an applicant's responsibility to give us the detailed information that we may need to make that finding, so I don't think this is particularly different, it's a different subject matter, but it isn't a particularly different level of detail than what we're seeing in some of the other documents that we get as part of our packages regularly. And if, you know, certainly, if any of us doesn't feel comfortable with that information, that's, you know, then we use substitutions, or we ask for continuations, so I don't think this is forcing us to make any decisions we're not comfortable with.
Well, as long as I can ask people to explain it to me.
That is fine. That's your problem.
I have a thought. It's interesting, it occurs to me, that, I mean, this is just kind of an aside, but that there's a strong, active vocal advocacy group for trees, which is great, that's fine, they should be doing that, but there's no corresponding advocacy group for SALT, at least that shows up here. So it seems...
I'm advocating for solar.
Me, too. Well, as I recall the last meeting, most of the people were advocating one point of view. You know, I'm not saying, again, that's great that people are advocating for trees, they should do that, but makes kind of an unbalanced presentation.
I think, you know, in the past, we've made zoning ordinance amendments or recommendations for those based on, among other things, like you said, traffic impact studies, or stormwater analysis, or light, you know, safety levels, all of which technically none of us are experts in, so we rely on the information given to us based on, you know, the, the experts behind it, or the DPW, or legal, and so forth, so. And I think as a group, we can, we need to rely on that information, but the intent of this ordinance, to me, is clear. Down into the weeds, there might be some references to Alan's point that I don't technically, I'm not versed in, but the intent is clear, and it's been vetted by legal, it's been, it's been addressed by, we've had public comment, and we, and it's been changed because of that public comment. And, and because this, this process isn't done, I'm in favor of just moving this forward.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion to end the discussion.
To, to close the hearing and then make a recommendation.
To close the hearing, and a second motion.
Motion to close the hearing, and, second.
A second, and is there a motion to make a recommendation to the city council legislative matters committee?
Sure.
I'm asking you, if you would like to, if there is a motion that someone would like to make.
Okay. Uh... Is this not the number one?
Oh, yes, assuming it would be a recommendation to the city council legislative matters committee. It's not, it's not there. Sorry. Still moved?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Dana? Those in favor? Third?
Oops.
Those opposed? And the city council legislative affairs, legislative matters committee will meet on the April 8th at 5:00 PM, in council papers?
Yes.
In council papers. We have a 7:45 AM hearing for a request for a special permit agreement for Pioneer Valley Habitat to Humanity Florence MAP ID 42-179 E81 and E82 to reduce tree replacement based on provision of affordable housing. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
That's me. So I didn't bring any presentation materials, but I'm assuming you have our application that I can reference?
Yes.
So, Pioneer Valley Habitat Humanity is building four homes as part of a special permit that the city got for this land before they transferred the property to Habitat. And there are three lots on a common driveway, and then a fourth lot on the road. So, for the application today, I presented materials about the trees that we cut down for the three houses on the common driveway, which is lots two, three, and four. So, we have, from the very beginning, and with the city support, planned these homes as zero net energy homes, to be energy efficient, and as Pioneer Valley Habitat does, they are, our mission is to build low-income housing. These houses are subject to a future deed restriction, so they'll be permanently affordable to people earning less than 80% of the area median income. So, when we went out to inventory the trees on this lot, there was over 50 acres of land conserved as part of this project, four acres were set aside for development, and the city conserved over 50 acres of land. We were surprised to find there were a number of significant trees. So, with the recent changes to the city's significant tree bylaw, we wanted to come back and ask for an amendment to the permit so that we could be under the jurisdiction of that new version of the significant tree bylaw, and get a waiver of the replacement requirement for the trees that we cut down that were to the south, east of the zero net energy home.
Can you just say again how many trees, more significant trees did we remove?
So there were, for lots two, three, and four, 15 trees. It was 413 breast height inches, so basically, we had each tree measured at breast height, and for each inch of breast height, we're supposed to replace with at least a half-inch tail fur of trees, so divide the 413 in half to find the amount that we would have to replace. So, if we eliminate from that calculation the number of trees that were cut down that are through the south and east of the homes, which provide solar access to the homes, it brings that number of 413 down to 185 inches.
And so, and your request is to not have to do any of that replacement, is that correct?
I would certainly make that argument, that we shouldn't, that the whole project. So, all 413 acres, inches of trees, all 15 trees, were cut down for access to the homes. Some, because there's a long common driveway, some of them are not in front of the houses, they are part of the project whose goals was zero net energy houses, so I would be very happy if you considered the whole project as a whole, that we cut down those trees, but at the very least, I was looking for a waiver of the trees that are to the south and east of the homes directly in the solar path of the, that would have blocked the solar access to the homes.
And, just a question from one of our board members who wasn't able to be here, who submitted comment in advance. Is there, so the intention is for there to be solar, but there is no guarantee that solar will be...
We'll be installing solar before we sell it to the homeowners.
Okay, so will be, there is a guarantee that they will be sold, actually, solar-ready homes?
Yeah, and I submitted the solar array layout that PV Squared put together for the houses.
Great.
For lot one, I didn't include that in these calculations, because we haven't actually made that decision yet.
Okay.
For those, that one lot, but these, lots two, three, and four are already under construction, the lots are cleared, the solar panels are ordered, so.
Technical questions from the board before we hear from the public? We'll open it up to public comment, and then...
I'm happy to keep answering questions if I can.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public on this particular agenda item? Please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for us. Thoughts of folks on the board about their request?
I'm happy to make a public comment, just so you know, what a balanced person I am. Again, Lilly Lam... Again, Lily Lamart, 39 Monroe Street. I want to make clear that I support this project. I think it's, you know, this is in line with the language of the Significant Tree Ordinance to request and to be granted waivers for projects like these that promote affordable housing in the city and that also advance our solar production. So I, I fully support it. And I will also say that I asked the tree warden to keep a spreadsheet of all of the inches of, of trees that we lose and don't have a plan for replacing. And I think that that's important data to keep track of for any, any project where significant trees are lost and, you know, canopy is, you know, is reduced in the city.
Did you say that you want us to ask him to do that or you've already asked?
I've already asked him to do that. I just want to let you know that we're, that we're trying to track the data because I think it's important. I think it's also important to realize, and this kind of goes to the Significant Tree Ordinance in a conversation we've had with Carolyn, is that we are increasingly recognizing the crudeness of the, of the Significant Tree Ordinance when it evaluates inches at diameter of breast height. Because as we know, within each inch that you gain in a tree, you get a multiplicative amount of tree mass. And so the difference between a one-inch and a two-inch tree is much difference between the, the difference between a 21 and a 22-inch tree. So just to say that I feel like this raises some important questions about how we evaluate trees and what we consider important replacement for trees. And so that is, that is something that we are taking into consideration. We hope to work with the planning department to refine and improve the language about replacement. But as to this project, we're in.
Thank you. And just so you know, the zoning does require that we track the number of trees taken out as part of the planning board's process of review of site plans. So going back to when this was first adopted, we've been tracking that information and sharing it with the tree board. So we have a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And for other board members, staff does for the amendment approval to reduce the total replacement calculation.
So not completely, but just be adjusted for the south and east?
Correct. That was allowed by zoning.
So I feel comfortable with that, it is a very good project. Other questions, comments, discussion, questions for the applicant?
Do you think that there are other, many other projects or any other projects that would fall into this that are sort of somewhere in process and might come and ask to come into the new zone?
Yes.
There are at least two. The spreadsheet will go up. Is there a motion or is there a comment on this issue?
I mean, I think it's great that we're doing affordable housing. How would this board vote if, like, you know, someone was building five mansions?
It's not eligible for the... Well, the ordinance is very specific about the board having to weigh the benefits. One of them is for solar access to individual homes. But there are, but that's not the only one. The way the ordinance states is you have to have more than one benefit. So this one was solar and affordable housing. It could be open space preservation and solar access.
A mansion builder could get away with it.
What's that?
A mansion builder could get away with it.
Right. Right.
Mansion builder could get away with it. Are you building a mansion?
Building, I'm building it right now.
So two criteria is a little, two...
Minimally, I think the way the ordinance is written. And it could be more.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're, we don't have to, I was just, it was more of a question of consistency.
Right. And it's not just for affordable housing.
Now, is there a motion?
I made the motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Is there another motion?
You got it? No.
Motion to approve special permit amendment for Pioneer Valley Habitat Community Florence MAP ID 42-179 18011 and 182 to reduce tree replacement based on provisions of affordable housing.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a 8:00 P. M. hearing, a request by Patrick J. Melnick, Jr. and Zoe Seidner for a special permit with major site plan that can structure a three-story residential building with more than 20% reduction in parking at 76 Gothic Street in Northampton, MAP ID 31B-188. For folks who are in the room, we typically begin our hearings with a presentation from the applicant and we may ask some technical questions. And at that point, we'll open up the floor for public comment. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
First of all, I know a number of members of the Melnick family. I know Zoe Seidner, Pat's wife. I think I can be objective if anyone wants to have any recusance, so I can do that.
Were there any issues, would anyone like for Mr. Verson to recuse himself?
His name is what?
Mr. Verson, Alan Verson.
What's that?
You're famous.
Good evening, my name is Pat Melnick and I'm the applicant along with my wife Zoe Seidner, who is not here tonight. We are, we go on 76 Gothic Street for the, the project is proposed here in Northampton. The site is currently on the corner of Trumbull Road and Gothic Street, as you can see by the...
Could you speak a little louder?
Oh, sure. The, the project is on Gothic Street in Northampton. It's on the corner of Gothic Street and Trumbull Road. And we're proposing to put a, a, a second building on the same lot. The second building is proposed to have a, three condominiums within it. The existing use of the, the site is a, a, a single building. The first floor is primarily, it's office space. My wife actually works there and she's a lawyer, she works there with a few other lawyers primarily. And on the second floor is a apartment rental that we rent out. On the, on the side where the proposed building is currently is, is a lawn with a small shed which is proposed to be removed. And that's where the proposed development is. We, currently, there's a access off Trumbull Road for parking. There's about four to five parking spaces there now in the back and the rear, in the rear of the building. They're not marked, but about four or five cars can fit there now. We're proposing to expand that slightly to seven spaces. There's an additional diagram I can look to in a minute that shows the parking plan. But we are asking for a reduction in the parking by over 20%. We feel that's appropriate for a number of reasons. Primarily, this, this proposed development is close to downtown. We feel that people will be able to walk to pretty much anything they need. They have access to buses, they have access to the bikes, the electronic bikes downtown, they have a, they can walk to the bus station downtown. They can walk to the train. So we don't feel that this project is going to increase traffic by any substantial means. And for that reason, we don't feel that there's a need for much parking at the property. We think the reduction in parking is appropriate due to the limited need to drive anywhere based on this property, this project's location. There was one tree that was cut this past summer on existing lawn that was over 20 inches. We are proposing to add a number of trees around the lot where we are able. I think we're proposing to add six trees. That will be, that will not be enough to replace the, the existent, the amount of inches, the half inches of the tree that was removed. So I have proposed to pay into the tree fund to make up for the difference there. There will be, oh, the condo, well, I can show you a picture of the condos. Before going any further, I should say that Terry Reynolds is the engineer in this project and Emily Estes is the architect who's designing these plans. And they're both here tonight and probably can answer any questions you have. But this is a preliminary plan by Emily Estes. As you can see, the, the proposal is a stack design, so each condo will be on one single floor. There will be a basement, which storage in the basement? We're proposing that bike storage be in the basement as well so that people who live there can have bikes. We're not proposing any dumpsters on the site. We're proposing that everybody maintain their own trash, which can be done and maintained below the stairway, as you can see in the rear.
Where?
The stairs will be in the rear of the building. So this will be the rear of the building and we would propose putting the trash right there. The existing building here has a stairway to the existing apartment and they maintain their trash under that stairway and recycle it.
And do so just picks it up?
Do so just picks it up, correct. We're proposing the same essentially for the new building. We are asking that the traffic study be waived for very similar reasons for the parking study to be waived due to the close proximity to downtown, the availability of resources to these residents by walking and biking and public transportation. We don't think the traffic will be increased in any significant way. As you can see, the, in the front of the building, there will be a walking access to the existing sidewalk. The rear of the building will be where the, where you can come in and park and get into your, and get access to your condo in that, that direction. That, that's essentially our plan, if you have any other questions.
Can you say a little bit about lighting, about lighting on, on the building, near the building?
The lighting, I can, with Emily Estes adjusted specifically, but we're not, we're, the only lighting I believe we're proposing is there is a small outdoor porch for each unit, this right here. And we'll, we'll have lighting in the front steps and we'll have lighting for each of the units when they, where they access the building. There is a lighting design or lighting plan attached to it, we'll leave your plans, which shows the lighting, but it's, I think it's fairly modest for the building. No, no large lights being directed in any direction.
Pat, could, could you, on the passenger car movement plan, can you explain the, the way those, that car is moving coming out?
It's, I can, I think Terry could probably explain that better. But it's my understanding, it's a tight spot, as you can see, because of the, the five parking spots behind the existing building. They, the, the cars who park in those two additional spots behind the new building will have to make a, they won't be able to make one sweeping movement and then leaving the parking lot. They're gonna have to make a couple. I don't know if fifteen, but a couple, a couple back and forth.
So they pass out and with the rear of the car facing the lawn and then pull out?
Pull forward, I think they back out towards the lawn. I believe they pull forward, back and out.
And DPW had comments about that and sort of fortifying the edge of the pavement there to prevent, you know, degradation of the lawn area.
How would that work in the winter or snow removal in general? How's that gonna work?
There's a couple of spots for snow removal towards the entrance of the, where Trumbull Road as well as the, the lawn between the two houses. But the reality is that the snow's gonna have to be removed if there's a big storm.
Yeah, we said, it's no storage and I thought, snow removal would be more.
You're gonna get through a couple storms, I think, I'm not hoping.
Other technical questions before we open it up?
Yeah, just back to the parking, so four parking spaces, that's what it is. Four parking spaces, that's what you're having?
Seven, seven parking.
Seven, oh, okay.
No, there's exist, sorry, there's existing, there's about four or five right now. We're proposing seven actual spaces.
I'm hoping to get seven out of five.
What, what would the normal requirement be that they're coming in under for that number?
Yeah, so the table shows 13, so they're asking for a special permit. This project is not only a major site plan, but also a special permit for the reduction in total required parking. So they're asking for just under 50% reduction.
Why would it need three units?
They have the office space and the existing apartment and then three, the size of each of the units would trigger two parking spaces for...
Got it.
So six, just six parking spots in theory for the brand new building.
Just the new building.
Plus the office space and the existing apartment.
And the other apartment.
I don't mean to be crude, but at least I'm guessing they'll be very nice units. Do you imagine that anyone in one of these apartments is ever gonna use the bus?
I don't know why not, honestly.
Have you ever used the bus here?
Yes.
As the applicant's seen comments from the staff?
They're not in this format, but we corresponded about outstanding issues. I think the only remaining issue probably is about the Trumbull sidewalks and they took that to be replaced and it's...
Yeah, so relative to the reduction in parking, one of the comments was their on-street parking, but concerning that, you want easy access from where they're parking to the building and the sidewalks on both sides, Gothic and Trumbull are in rough shape. So you heard the comment from the staff to replace not just at the entrance of the, or at the corner, but the entirety of the property on Gothic and Trumbull for the sidewalks? And you're okay with that?
Well, I'm okay with it, I think it's fair, I think it's a little excessive. I mean, we're, for the traffic mitigation, we're, we're paying in the $3,000. I'm sorry, but the rules, I tell you, replacing both sidewalks, the Trumbull Street sidewalk as well as the, the Gothic Street sidewalk and I'm going to have to install potentially granite on the Gothic Street sidewalk and as well as put in the corner of the, the corner. I got a price for that, it's over $22,000, so it's a fairly expensive undertaking, which I, I think it's excessive. That's an excessive requirement for what we're asking and for the size of this project. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and as you know, in all, in your site plan review projects, any applicant that is above the street needs to either install a new sidewalk if the one doesn't exist or make sure the sidewalks are, meet standards surrounding the property. In this case, there are sidewalks there, but they're falling apart and they certainly don't meet ABA compliance with all the upheavals on both sides and the cracked panels. Given that there will be heavily reliant on the street for on-street parking, that means... that means that people will be definitely using the sidewalks and needing to have access using the sidewalks, so.
Are both sidewalks in equally bad shape?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at the pictures, they're, I mean, they are rough. But so in theory, they didn't need parking reduction if they had thirteen, fifteen spaces?
No, the zoning still says you need to bring the infrastructure that abouts your property up to standard if it's not. And even if there were no sidewalks, the requirement is to place sidewalks.
Well, we've done that a number of times, you know, and we talked about like River Valley Market sulfur, where there's a sidewalk to nowhere, but that's the only opportunity we have at that time is to install a sidewalk, hoping that eventually the sidewalk on either side will catch up and you could argue the same thing here over time.
And it's not, it's also not part of traffic mitigation because it's about the site itself. So traffic mitigation is for off-site impacts.
So how many parks, so there are four units, right? Three residential and seven parking spots.
How many offices?
Yeah, three plus one, so.
It's actually four plus one, because there are four residential units plus offices.
This building is office plus one residence. So three, four, and then one plus office.
So seven parking spaces. You know, I have this problem with parking downtown. I live in the old school. And we have eight plus units, commercial mixed use. And they'll have a hundred and ten parking spaces. So nowadays, folks, elders who live in a building that's residential park, they cannot leave and do grocery because the commercial kick it in and park in their spot. So I'm very kind of uneasy when they know of parking, unless that is stipulating somehow that the residents, they will have parking available and not be taken by commercial or, I don't know, I just have this problem.
I mean, yeah, I don't, that's, that's outside our purview, but, you know, I mean, it looks like from this application that you're looking at proposes this condominium, so your condominium documents would need to, you know, be precise and specific. Is that correct, that they would be condominiums as opposed to rentals?
Yes, the three million is a condominium.
But what I would say though, part of the argument in the zoning for having a reduction in parking for shared uses is that there's different demands at different times. So it certainly wouldn't be staff recommendation that parking spaces be assigned for certain times of the day, particularly in this situation, there's quite a bit of on-street parking around the property. And so I think that assigning spaces sort of is, goes against the concept in the zoning that there would be different demands. So the office users would be there during the day, probably the residential occupants would be there in the evenings more so than during the day.
Well, theoretically, I think that's good, but in practice, that does not happen. That's my experience backing that. And that is, personally, there is not enough number of parking spaces for residents to leave into the grocery in the middle of the day or in the morning or come to the doctor. They have no way to park close to the building and to access their units. So this whole thing is kind of a.
Well, let's open it up for public comment and then we'll take a little, I'm sure we're gonna have a discussion about parking and once we hear from folks, we can sort of talk about what.
I mean, I kind of sign, I, I mean.
Well, I just wondered if that's enough. And that's why I'd ask, how many per-unit parking spaces would be allocated?
We'll talk more about parking, I'm sure. So we'll open it up to public comment for now. We will leave the public hearing open. We may ask you to come back and answer some questions as well.
That's fine. I didn't know if you wanted to hear from Emily Estes, especially on that lighting question. I don't know if I answered that.
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, you would, that would be great.
Hello, Emily. Things are, you know, in the early stages, so let's see here. I believe part of the submittal had cut sheets.
I can pull them out.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that would be. Thank you. This is pretty small, but the light fixtures are indicated on the elevations. There's one at every, this is the rear elevation. And it's not going there, okay. There's one by the rear entry door, right here. And there would be a porch light. Those are, cut sheets are indicated. Here we go, these are the porch roof lights.
Going to be towards his house?
This is the exterior wall scotts. These all meet dark light requirements. This is the front entry, rear entry porch light. And then if I can find my plan, I'll show you where they are. On this plan, you'll see W1 right here, W2 right here. These are the exterior sconces. And then we have a front entry, at the front entry portico, the C1. And then the C1 at each exterior balcony. So it's very minimally lit. Any other questions?
Are those motion activated, did you say, or they're on a timer?
Um, I haven't gotten far. Can you describe, you wanted to show the elevations of the building and also describe the exterior finish, sort of what the elements are? So we went with a federal-style type building. It is historically precedent in New England. And with this, we, some key elements are symmetry, balance in the front facade. We have a very symmetrical balance. It has a traditional portico. It's all gonna be finished in borrel or woodlike features. And then the other key feature being a decorative cornice at the top. We are proposing to use vinyl siding and with a high-quality vinyl window. At the bottom here is a close-up detail of a paradigm window. So we're going with very high-end, it'll have a crown and some decorative molding, casing moldings. And then also a fixed raised panel shutter. Again, going very traditional, I think it'll be a very classic design.
The picture in the lower left, is that of the proposed building or just to show?
Precedent image, so it's of an existing building and that's what we're striving for as far as the decorative cornice and some of the window detail.
The detail at the roof line, I assume, is more elaborate than what you would do.
I am, you know, budget is always an issue from my perspective. I would love to have a very decorative cornice, but within reason. But I would say it'd be similar to that picture with the exception of the corbel brackets would probably not be there, but it would be multiple layers of trim built up. But that's in your detail anyway of that, right? Yes, in the elevation. I don't have an actual detail, but.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public comment now, so if you've got a comment, please come to the podium and tell us your name and your address.
Evening. I'm Bill Deal. My wife Jean Burks and I live at 75 Gothic Street, directly across from the proposed building. And we've lived there for 25 years and hope to live there for 25 more, we hope. And we love where we live. It's a beautiful place. We love North Hampton. We love the fact we can walk everywhere. However, we don't work where we can walk, and so we add two cars. So I think the argument that people can live there and walk and not have as many cars really isn't a good argument. I will say that the parking behind the current building is rarely used, two or three cars at a time. So it isn't overused now and so the parking may in fact, you know, be sufficient. But I think the argument that people will walk and not need a car is probably not the right one. I have a couple of concerns though, concerns about the sidewalks. And I'm glad to hear that you're aware of the fact that the sidewalks on both those streets are in poor condition, not just in this area. The second area is the curving. We've had this winter, the curving on the Trumbull roadside torn up a number of times by plows. So something that needs happening around that, besides the safety of that. We of course care about the landscaping and so on, like typical homeowners. And we care about the fact that this style of building is substantially different from the other housing in that area, or stuff in that area. And we of course would prefer to look like we do, which is a 1840 farmhouse. This is inragiable, but that's what that is. The other concern we have is the basement. We are one of the lowest locations in North Hampton. The Mill River used to run over there and things that happen in neighborhood tend to flood the basements around it. So I don't know if you've looked into that or not, that is a caution I would, I would hope you would look into. And the last thing is, I'm sorry, this is the last thing, which is snow removal. It's an important consideration, of course. And on the Gothic side of this building is where the parking is in the street. And so removal is always difficult there. If snow has nowhere to go, you either block the parking or the sidewalks. So some kind of remove, snow removal beyond just the typical plodding that it needs to be in place that could be really usable. So those are the comments I have. I totally support having a building there. It's an empty lot. I'd love to have a building there with owners. Be great for everybody, but I have those concerns about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other comments?
My name is Susan Grant. My husband and I live at number 24 Trumbull Road and in August, we will have been there forty years, I guess. We have tenants on the ground floor and the third floor. I strongly object to this proposal in its entirety. The neighborhood that we live in, close though it is to downtown, has always been surprisingly quiet. And part of the reason is that there have been some pockets of open space in between the buildings that presently stand there. One of these was pretty devastated by the St. Michael's project of building a gigantic ditch in their backyard, which they eventually partly filled in with cobblestones, but it still looks pretty odd. And the other is this proposal. I think this building is very far from any image I have of a federalist dwelling. The front perhaps might occur as a little illustration in a book of how federal buildings have nice windows. But what we will see from our house is the side, which looks rather like a minimal security prison. The main objection I have to the entire project is that it is sacrificing by filling in one of the few remaining bits of open space that existed in that entire neighborhood. I don't consider it an emptied lot. It was a green lawn where we frequently saw rabbits and occasionally fox and frequently birds. The more, I know that mantra at present is infill. The more you fill things in, the less space there is to turn around and the quality of life for those of us who want to continue living there becomes progressively more and more degraded to the point of being claustrophobic. I am totally opposed to this project. I do want to just add one little practical point. I do agree with the man who just spoke, that although he was too polite to put it in this way, I think it's ludicrous to assert that if each of these units is bought and occupied, that the people who live in them will walk, bicycle, or bus everywhere they need to go. They won't. I walk and bicycle everywhere I possibly can. And I have taken the bus on occasion. It's not convenient. It's not comfortable. It doesn't turn up at the moment you want it. And if you were unlucky enough to be crippled, you would have a very tough time getting on and off of the bus every time you monitor. I don't see any way that these people who are proposing this can ensure that the people who buy these units are all going to be extremely mobile, extremely well-to-do and extremely motivated to walk and bicycle and use the bus. I would think that like most people in our neck of the woods, they want to have cars. And they're not gonna have any place to put those cars. The congestion on Trumbull Road and Gothic Street is already tremendous, especially in days of quarters and session. So I see this as nothing but bad for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes. My name is Dorothy Neen and I live at 32 Trumbull Road. I've lived there for seventy-two years. And I like it, the way it is. As it is, we have a lot of traffic. We have cars parking on Trumbull Road from the courthouse, from family services, from People's Institute. And it's pretty congested. The only time it isn't is after probably eight o'clock at night. And Sue is right when she says if people think, if you think people are gonna ride bicycles, they're not. We have a few riders that ride around, but most of the people that live that close to town wanna be able to either walk or drive. If you have groceries, you can't carry them. You've got to have an automobile to carry them with. And as far as shopping, you like to shop where the prices are better. And that's the way it is. As far as parking, it's going to be horrible. And I can tell you that right now. I lived there long enough to know what it is. The building does not look like it fits in with Trumbull Road or with Gothic Street. It's like the building in Florence probably, right on the main drag, practically in the middle of the road. It's gonna be the same thing. I object to it. I object to the parking, the building, and it ruins our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
My name is Don Grant and I've lived with my wife at 24 Trumbull Road for forty years. We lived in North Hampton for fifty-one years. And I'd like to address the parking with the new building. The old building has at the most by maybe four and a half spaces behind that are reasonable parking spaces behind the existing building. And when the new building is put in, it'll be larger than the old building. Its footprint is closer in front to Gothic Street with its porch. And in back, it's appreciably further back than the back of the existing building. So there's also only one entrance and exit, just the same driveway for both, when both houses exist, they're just, they'll come and go through the same address. And I don't see how you can get in more than maybe three spaces behind a new building. But the new building is three stories high, which is a half a story or a two, or one story higher than the buildings to either side. It'll be the biggest building in the area on that, on that block. And, yeah. There's. Well, I'm talking about parking and I'm talking about cars. The number of cars that are, that are in there. Oh. Right, there's a, there's a stone wall right behind both of these buildings. And along that stone wall are parked seven cars in front, in front of our house. We can barely get out of our house now as it is. And then we have our parking space, which is for four cars. And we have four apartments. I believe the general idea is to have, for an apartment, you need to have, or a condo, you need to have two parking spaces. And with the new building, the proposed building, you have six necessary spaces. And there's just not enough room. And there is just not enough room, as it is, for them to be there. And I assume, I'm guessing that this plan is a maxi plan. Go for three apartments and settle for two apartments. And with two apartments, you'd have four spaces in the back. And maybe they could get permission for that. But I don't see how you can get in an adequate number of parking spaces in back of this building as it stands. I think you'll have to clip off the front porch and the back porch and leave you with a nice big rectangle. I think the look of the building as it is isn't really bad, even though it looks bad in the plan because of all those horizontal lines. If it was in a color display of the side of the building, maybe they should get a picture of the original building that was in the corner, in the lower corner of the view. It looks like the example of the building, the Federal style, came from, say, Boston or Somerville. And I don't think it is appropriate style for, as it's been done for the area. Mostly buildings in that area are one and a half to two and a half stories with V-shaped slanting roofs. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? At this time, we'll have some discussion among the board. We do keep our public hearing open because we may have some questions for the engineer, the architect, or the applicant. Depending on our conversation, we may invite some more public comment. But that's generally how we organize our meetings. So I will ask Carolyn, if you could just give us a reminder of why this is a site plan and special permit? Just to help us understand everyone on the board, understand what our role is, what our purview is.
Sure. So the site plan criteria is triggered because it's more than a 2,000 square foot addition as well as adding a second unit, a second structure on the property. There are minimum open space requirements in the Urban Residential C District that require thirty percent of the parcel to remain open. That is being met. There's also a minimum lot size requirement that needs to be met for the number of units proposed. So a total of five units would, there's one unit for 2,500 square feet. So there's actually, there is a zoning table on the plan set that indicates that they're under the minimum. They're just up to the minimum lot size requirements, and they also meet the open space requirements for that. So that's the site plan piece. So the uses, the number of units in this district next to downtown Urban Residential C, the total number of units, those are met. The special permit is triggered. I'm sorry, it's also a major site plan because of the size of the project. So that's where stormwater requirements and traffic analysis is required. I think it's a reasonable request for the waiver of the traffic study. The applicant has offered to make the traffic mitigation payment in lieu of doing traffic mitigation. But the other piece, in addition to the major site plan, is the stormwater analysis. So you got the stormwater report. EPW made comments about the stormwater system and recommendations for some slight revisions that I would recommend they put into any conditions. That they also record a stormwater maintenance plan for what they proposed. I mean, sorry, did they record that maintenance agreement? The special permit is triggered by the fact that they're asking for more than a twenty percent reduction in the parking. Of course, it is downtown. The board has commonly reduced parking, certainly up to twenty percent, with not too much discussion. This is for more than twenty percent, which is what's triggering the special permit. You know, if they're showing seven parking spaces on site, which would accommodate, you know, the residential units. So then there'd be the office space on the first floor, which many times businesses use street parking anyway in the downtown area for parking. But that is the, that's the special permit criteria or trigger. So you would be evaluating the special permit for the request for parking reduction. There also, you would look at, I'm sorry, as part of the site plan, you do look at sort of the context of the neighborhood. There are several three-story and larger mass buildings on Trumbull, but also on Gothic Street. You've got 64 Gothic Street, which is quite an extensive massing. There are some residential condominiums across the street on Trumbull that are three stories. So that, I think, fits in with the context. But all of that is part of your site plan.
I was just going to say, so the massing of the building, I don't have an issue with because there are representative examples close to the property. But, so this is downtown adjacent. It's not downtown, so it's not open to Architectural Review Board and so forth. But because it's special permit, what leeway do we have? You know, the front, I'm fine with, the vinyl siding kind of hits me wrong because I don't know that on Gothic Street, I don't think there are any structures that have a vinyl siding. But we have comments at that level because it's special permit, you know, versus like a cementitious siding that's painted, would, I think, you'd want in keeping with the surrounding area than a vinyl sided building. Is that in our purview as a special permit?
So I think that it's, you know, I think that it's not the same level of review as a special permit for the number of units. So if it had been over six, I think you'd probably have more design control over that level of detail. I think the, I think under site plan, when you're looking at fitting in with the context, I think that makes sense. Another key is really to, you know, I think you could go either way with the materials because I think you're right. There's, most of the siding is either wood clavbered or in some cases, there may be some other cementitious material. I think the other piece, of course, is the level of detail of those, the window elements and the cornice work, which can be hard to do in vinyl. So I think you'd want to be, I would recommend either way. I mean, if you were strongly leaning towards cement fiber board or something, I think it would, and to make it more clavbered look, that would be appropriate. But on the other hand, you could also be very detailed about making sure those elements that are shown in the elevation are implemented and that no change from that. Because that really takes, that is representative of the character that they're presenting.
So we need to make sure this was approved and then stripped away. Right or different?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, you want to go? Good work.
We're on the right-hand side. Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to get into choosing materials. My recollection, we never do that.
Usually, no.
I mean, next will be decided, there's ten different kinds of vinyl siding. We'll determine which of those various kinds is appropriate. I mean, I think that's up to the applicant, in my opinion. I am, however, bothered by the parking issue. These are not only three more, well, let's see. First, one other thing about the massing. Mark, it's true, there are three, other three-story buildings. But most of the others, the third floor is within the pitch group, within the gable. Here, it's three full stories and a flat roof. So the scale, the mass of the building, I think, far exceeds what else is in the neighborhood. And it's not only three more units, but I think we have to take recognition of the fact that it's 2,100 square feet per unit. There's three bedrooms, two full bathrooms. They're huge. They're essentially like three houses stacked one on top of the other. And a three, a 2,100 square foot condominium or apartment, whatever, is going to have, I would think, more than one car per unit. I mean, that's, I think that's a dream. Whether they like to walk to town or not, these are big, expensive units with a lot of living space and a lot of bedrooms. There are nine bedrooms being built on this, in this building. And I have a hard time believing that the cars, including, of course, the existing building, can fit into the parking spaces. And during the day, I believe, you know, the, Melnix can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe parking on the street is very crowded there. It's always filled up. And I don't know about at night, but that means that the parking burden from this building will be on the street, not on the, on the parking provided on the lot. So, I don't know, that's an issue for me.
I'd like to say something about parking that is probably going to be, that some people won't like, but I don't have a problem with the parking. I think it's interesting that we get very riled up about this and say, this isn't how people act. But this is a private project. An applicant would be taking the risk that he or she will or will not sell this unit to someone who wants it. And, you know, as crazy as it seems, I mean, I think people come here often and say, everybody has a car, everybody drives. And you all know that that's not my experience. You know, that's not my experience in a 1,600 square foot condo with two adults and one vehicle downtown. It's not, as unusual as it is for people to imagine people living here with one car, that's as unusual as it is for me to imagine living out in Ward Six with two cars. And so, you know, it's, I don't think it's unreasonable to presume that the people who would spend the money to buy these condos will choose to do that. You know, nobody is going to be kind of forced to live in these units and then find a place for their three cars. The other thing, you know, it was only a couple of years ago, I think it was maybe two and a half, three years ago, that the city funded a parking study. And we discovered that there is an enormous amount of private paved parking, both in the Central Business District, but also kind of bleeding into this, you know, next-adjacent zoning district. And, you know, I personally know a number of people who pay by month for private parking if they happen to have an extra car and they need to stash it somewhere. There's, there are many different ways that people kind of manage that parking need. But I don't necessarily think it's in our purview to try to look into a crystal ball and use only our own individual experience and say that there's no other option. You know, it's...
Well, I just, on your point, we assume that a household has at least a couple or children, and at least two cars. Because people drive, you have to face it.
But that's not necessarily the case.
Well, but it's my case, I experienced it.
Right, right. I'm just saying, I experienced the exact opposite. So what we have to do is kind of balance, you know, where our experiences, you know, determine whether or not we approve a site plan. I mean, you know, we generally know that we have a lot of asphalt in North Hampton. You know, when we look at our satellite map, we have a lot of asphalt. There is a lot of parking. It's just inefficiently used. So I'm amazed that, you know, like, I can think of three families who I know who would be dying to buy these condos straight away. Each family has one car and two kids. And it's like, this would be a dream to be able to be so close to town, you know, have, be able to walk and whatnot. But that's, you know, again, that's unusual, maybe unusual, but it's not impossible. And I think that that's on the applicant to decide if they want to take the financial risk of building this kind of...
I don't think it's just on the applicant. As someone, I mean, I think, I mean, I fought continually in this last project that I did with people parking illegally in front of, and part of it is that the city, I mean, so much of this would be solved if the city ticketed people for parking in front of your driveway, within three feet of the driveway. You know, the people were polite and, but, you know, listen, this condo, part of the association is not going to be managing politeness. You know, that's just, you know, that's, we just have to assume that they're going to be like everyone else in this area. And so I just think that, you know, we are part of the parking idea. And you're right, not everyone has two cars. But is that, and you certainly don't have a right to the parking spot in front of your house. But I do think that asking for such a reduction is, is more, I mean, it's one thing to ask for, let's say, the twenty percent, but this is more than that. This is much more than that. And, and I, and I just think that, you know, again, right now, it's easy to imagine because there's no, the snow has melted. Those streets get really, really narrow, really narrow. You know, and, but, the other thing, I'm completely separate of, is that I, I would like to know, I mean, of course, I don't feel like we should be able to say what siding they used. But, but they did show a picture, the one picture that they did show as an example, look gorgeous, the, this picture right here. And then, then they turned around and said, no, maybe they're not going to have that. And so, and so...
That's not what, the elevation is what you need to look at. That's really just...
Like a representative?
That's not the elevation. The elevation is the...
It's just a representative.
Yeah. It's the look they're going for.
Of the architectural style.
I said it's the look they're going for, but there's a huge difference between, I mean, a white, a white, so you're saying that if I say a white soffit, and that are the same thing?
No, what you need to look at is the elevation, and was the elevation drawing show you as to what they're planning for that cornice? So if you're, so, and maybe, you know, from this going forward, if you ever see a pretty picture, that's not what's being built. That's a side story. It's an attraction.
That I understood, I understood that part of it.
But that's why it's important to understand what's on the elevation because they need to build what's represented on the elevation, no matter what the siding. You have to, you have approved and dictated siding in other projects. And I think it's important to look at the context for that. The most recent one was the corner of Pomeroy Terrace and Bridge Street for that project, where the old Shaw's Motel was.
Oh, yeah.
So they, that was, you required them to do party plank on that.
That's what I was thinking of. Because I think that's a good example where we got more so than we usually do, which we kind of got into the weeds a little bit architecturally. A because we could, and B because we got it in the works.
Did we dictate the kind of siding? I remember that meeting after the discussion. I thought he agreed that, or specified what he was discussing.
He's agreed both, but we both...
Right, so we can talk about it and find out the level of interest in...
I wasn't around for that particular conversation, although that development is right in my neighborhood. So, I mean, I feel like we're looking at that level of specificity all the time, looking at sponsors, looking at cornice details. I mean, so while we might not be in the business of dictating them normally, I think the applicants are certainly supposed to show that level of detail. And I'm not sure why they're showing it if you don't have the ability to comment in a certain extent, especially when, in the case where we're looking at the context of the neighborhood.
Thoughts, Krista?
Well, because I feel like I'm waffling back and forth.
Um, well, because I feel like I'm waffling back and forth. I guess I'll, the siding detail, when they did say vinyl, I think I kind of reeled up, like, really? This big building, you're gonna put siding like that on that street? And that was a little like, I don't know, that, that would be the nicest thing to look at, per se, though there are vinyl sidos out there that aren't better than others.
But are gorgeous.
There are, I agree. And the vinyl windows, I, I'm very familiar with, and I can speak to their quality, and so, that part doesn't bother me. And I found it interesting, because the parking, for me, I was like, there's just no way people are gonna buy this. They don't have parking spots. But Tess, you say that they're out there, I can't say that they're not, because I don't know everything, so, you know, I can, I'm still a little like, wow, do we have enough spots to make this copacetic for the neighborhood? I don't, I still don't know, but I do appreciate you saying, like, hey, just because you drive two cars, or have two cars in your driveway, doesn't mean that everybody does, so, though these are pretty big units, so...
But the closer to downtown we've, we've got, the more often we've, we've given waivers of more than twenty percent.
Well, the, the other thing we have the data on is the fact that there's fewer car, there's less car ownership in the downtown area than there is in the outlying area, and that trend is continuing. So, you also may be looking at it from, you know, ten, twenty years. We're up to this point, but that's not what's necessarily happening now and towards the future.
Does that, is that, does that data actually, is it connected to a single family and a three-thousand-square-foot apartment? Or is that data looking at a bunch of students who don't, who don't have property? Who live, who live in Park Market Street?
I feel like I should be offended by that statement. I don't think it's that...
Pleasant couple of students.
I don't think it's that granularly, are, are actually doing another evaluation for more up-to-date, um, data. But it's generally taking, so it's not just, you know, the apartment buildings in downtown, it's a broader area.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna say that I, I would, I'm not gonna put forth a proposal to ask that they have more parking on here, but if somebody thinks that the, the reduction they're asking for is too much, then I think someone else could propose, you know, asking if the applicant could fit more parking somehow with a rejiggering of something. I mean, again, I'm not gonna ask that, because I think anytime an applicant is offering to not pave over part of their parcel, I'm, I'm happy that they're not doing that, so...
Well, they are just taking a big building off our house, so that's kind of like...
True, I mean, you know, I mean, but again, the more housing that we have close to downtown...
Well, but again, it's three-bedroom, twenty-one hundred square units. Which is fine, I mean, that's great that they're being, but those are big, this is a big building.
You know, what that lady says, that, you know, I go in, go do my groceries, have to drive and, and...
You don't go to State Street?
Huh?
You don't go to State Street?
No, I go in there, the car, I go in Walmart, I go in Harley, so, and my point is that I go to downtown, Las Vegas, we have a dinner, but we do have to do these things to there instead. And, you know, I'm going six years old, right? Celebrating my sixties. And in my building, there are seventies, seventy-five, and these folks, literally, they cannot leave. If they leave their car, when they are back, come back, there is no spot. They have, they don't have how to carry their grocery. I have friends who have surgery. She didn't have even handicap, pardon. She have to wait, I mean, you know, it's just...
Well, so, I would ask that anybody who is looking at this, who feels that there should be more parking spaces, we should, should be asking the applicant of putting forth a recommendation for what that would look like.
I don't know that you could do... May require redesigning the whole project, so, jump off the boards, which we're not gonna do.
I mean, even if you shrunk the size to, you know, thou, if you had three one-thousand-square-foot units, the requirement would be three, would be one per...
Right, so the parking requirement is based on the square footage of the units that are being proposed, not necessarily just the number of bedrooms or the total size.
So, we're still at the same number of spots if we go down, like, just the same?
No, if the, if they were smaller, if they were thousand-square-foot, then it would be cut in half.
So, anything north of a thousand, you need to, in theory?
Right, right.
I'm just, to give my opinion, I'm, I'm okay with the parking. Back close to downtown, giving the waiver, I think that's the applicant's, if, if the applicant finds a buyer, good for them. And, and if it's not attractive to people, because they've got two cars and they don't wanna fight with the parking spot on the street, then they're not gonna buy. So, it's going to be marketed to and bought by people that don't have an issue with having maybe only one spot behind the building. So, I've got more of an issue architecturally, and I don't, you know, we've got actual fixture cuts of what the fixture is, but we don't, we don't have a cut through the profile. We've got a promise of a cornice and what, a rendering of what it might look like, or what the, you know, what it's modeled after. And, but the vinyl siding, to your point, there's, there's beautiful vinyl siding, and the on-site, it's not so much. And so, if, if I had more information to feel comfortable with, I'd be, I would have an issue with this project at all. But I don't, architecturally, I don't have enough to...
Do you, do you guys have any sense of the type of siding they want to use? Yes, could I address the parking briefly?
Sure.
My thought is that this is gonna be marketed, that if somebody wants to live there, they're gonna have one car that they can have at this property. If somebody wants to come in and have two cars, they're gonna have to find another place to rent a car in downtown. I mean, there are other pla, there are other options, there are parking rentals off King Street. I mean, there's other places that you can rent a spot that have a second car. I, 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 I'm gonna be writing condo documents, I, I'm not gonna guarantee two spots for each one of these units, I can't do that. And so, my thought is that you're gonna have one spot, you're gonna have the opportunity to have one spot available to you. But if you want more, you're gonna look elsewhere. I mean, it's just, it's just not, yeah, that's, it's not gonna give that.
How many cars are typically in the parking lot now?
During the day, there's more, because of the, the offices, but at night, there's, I can't remember if the tenant has one or two cars, but, you know, at night, it's just the tenant.
But during the day, it's...
During the day, there's, there's at least, there's usually three or four. There's mostly lawyers, so if they're a court, they're a court, but they're back in the office, but they're not always there at the same time anyway.
Can you talk a little bit more about, sort of, the character of the design, or maybe Emily can talk about the, the design itself, and, you know, if there's options or things?
I've considered putting on Hardy board, I'm sure Emily would love it if I do. I have not ruled it out. I, I, I'm hesitant to put it on these plans, because I just don't wanna get, I'm just concerned with the cost of the entire project and whether or not it's feasible to do. If I can do it, I'm gonna put on Hardy board. I mean, that's what I'd like to do, that's what I'd like to see, I'm gonna keep the office there, I want it to look nice. As far as the level of detail, I, I think the level of detail is put on there, we're not gonna do less than that, we're gonna do more. So, the level of detail and the trim of the windows, I, I think it's fairly nice, so she's proposed, and we're not gonna do less than that. As far as the cornice, I think the level of detail on there is on there, it's, it's fairly ornate, I believe that, it's what she's proposed, and, and that's what we're planning to do. But I think, let Emily speak to the, the level, the level of greater detail.
Um, before you do that, this may just be kind of general and helpful for all of us, it's not, it's not technical, per se, but can you just talk a little bit about, in terms of your home market research, like, you're thinking about, these are family units, so, you know, is there a particular kind of archetype buyer that you're imagining would, would be in each of these units? Or, as opposed to thinking about making two better units, or... Or that, like, once again, should I be offended?
They're working teleporting. I, not, well, I, in my own mind, I thought maybe it's somebody who's retired, and their kids have moved away, and they wanna move downtown, because they wanna be closer to downtown, and get their, their house, you know, outside of town. Or potentially, a younger family who, again, wants to be downtown and just, just for that reason. But, but I don't know, that's just my mind, I spoke to a realtor about this, but very briefly, and, and I haven't really gotten into that greater detail. The one thing you, you did just say, because I, I guess for me, I, the, the parking is, there's, there's too little parking. But one of the things you did just say briefly was that you would be writing the, the condo...
Docs.
The docs. And so, I would be perfectly, I, me, would be interested if you were to come back and with a notion of what those condo documents were relative to the parking situation, so that we could understand what, what you really, what you're, what you're envisioning in terms of restrictions with the parking.
Well, alternatively, you could just say that the condo documents have to specify that only one car is provided per unit, and that they show that before they go certificate back and forth. Instead of having, instead of...
We can't require an applicant to show, like, we've, in the past, we've talked about condo docs. We've, I don't think we can ask an applicant to draft them and then bring them back.
Well, you, you could, I mean, if the issue is you wanna make sure that some units don't get two and others get none, you can...
Can you designate the parking space?
Well, if that's the, well, I guess what I'm suggesting is if the parking is an issue because you're concerned that, that some may lose out, if, if it's clear upfront that the applicant, that the buyers know they get one space, then, then, you know, it will be up to them to figure out what to do if they opt to have more than one car.
So, we could condition that the applicant include something in the condo docs about that? Like, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, I mean, they're asking for a special permit for reduction in parking, so you wanna make sure that it's evenly distributed across the units.
Can you designate the parking per unit?
I would, I would not recommend that, because you have a business use there offsetting the rental use.
I mean, that would be something that he would decide in his condo docs. I mean, that's, that's not a site issue.
I don't feel that it's appropriate for us to get into that.
Yeah, I guess I feel...
Yes, just one minute, let me finish. It, I mean, if they wanna sell it so that the first buyer gets all the parking places, I mean, that's up to them and the market, and I don't think we should get into that, deciding whether they should assign one per unit, or two per unit during the day, and one at night. I mean, who knows? And I feel the same way about telling them what sort of siding to put on. I, I just, what kind of vinyl siding? As I say, there's, I mean, Krista can, she sells vinyl siding, it, there's so many different models and types, I just, I don't think we get into that. I think the issue of, the problem I have with parking is that the burden gets imposed on the neighborhood. If there isn't enough parking, they're gonna, and even there are too many cars, they'll park somewhere. And, you know, I guess the question is kind of like Tess said, is maybe that's for the marketplace to decide. Maybe someone won't buy, because they're, they have two cars and don't think they'll be able to park them there. I, I don't, I'm sort of torn between whether I think we should turn it down, because the neighborhood will pay the price, or whether I should think, let the market decide.
I, I have no problem with having just one parking spot. I have a problem, because if it's open, it's not assigned for each unit. In the business hours, a resident leave to the groceries, and the commercial parking in, or the other neighbor parking in, I mean, and they come back to, you know, to put away, or he or she cannot access that.
I, I honestly have no problem assigning a parking spot to the four units.
To me, to me, that would be...
That's perfect, if you wanna make that condition, that's fine. One, you know, one for the four residential units, and then the three for the business and, you know, guests or whatever at night, but that, that's perfectly fine.
And what happens if a unit actually gets sold to someone that doesn't have a car? It'll, parking place will remain empty.
They can rent it out, they can rent it to someone else.
That's a part of the condominium, I mean, it's a lot to do in that case, but...
It's theirs, I guess, right?
Yeah, I think that, that's up to the condominium. But, again, again, to me, if you assign the parking, and the resident leave, or even the commercial leave, and, you know, that's my...
That's fine, I really have no problem doing that, I'm happy to do that.
It feels to me, I mean, part of the South Street project issue, I'm sorry to bring it up, but the, the parking issue there, I think, was in part because there was, there were mostly or all rental units, and that was part of the concern with people, was that students and other people were gonna be packing into this space, and they were gonna come with a lot of vehicles. But I agree that since these are condos, and since they're obviously gonna be expensive condos, that people are gonna be making different kinds of decisions, and we can't guarantee that, but I would think, I'm less concerned about it here than I would be if they were these units, and rentals...
Won't they have just more expensive cars?
Oh, but I, I, I thought the idea on South Street was that you're gonna get, you know, five students who are gonna pack into an event, whatever, and then they're each gonna have an individual car. I do not think that that is gonna be the case in an owner-occupied condo.
But you can't, you can't just stipulate, this could turn rental next year. I mean, you can't stipulate that it's owner-occupied, but...
Yeah, I don't think you...
I'm more comfortable with the one spot per, per...
Two, you're asking for three?
Just like we have a lot of people, they live downtown, and I, I go to these homes, and I measure windows, and I do all sorts of stuff, and they work from home, and when I pull up... Three apartments? Their driveway is full with cars, and when I have general conversations with them, it's like, oh, I'm a professor, I remotely work, and this and that. So, they're not leaving. So, you could get somebody that buys one of these condos, they have two spots, they're like, well, doesn't matter to me, 'cause I've parked there, once I get it, I don't leave for a week. It's like, okay, well, it's not exactly producing a flow of traffic for people coming and going, because once you occupy those spots, if you're working for the week, you work from home, in theory, you could occupy those two, three spots if you don't say how many you're allowed to have, and everybody else is, that's so well.
No, that's fine, it might make it clear, they only have one car anyway, must have like, other arrangements.
Right.
I, I find that making that clear, anyway. Can't imagine somebody's gonna come in here and have two cars all the time with...
And they don't have water.
...association, which is not realistic.
Yeah.
A note about stormwater, again, just both...
I, yes, I think I was gonna let Carrie...
Oh, sure, would you like this? I was just gonna say, pretty general about stormwater abroad, but if you have specific things you wanna say, you know, PPW has required, recommends conditioning, you know, stormwater management plan to be filed, and, you know, so...
Which is good.
Yeah.
Should be done.
Yes.
The part, part of it, it'll be recorded, and it's just standard maintenance of, you know, there's a catch basin, a subsurface system, they need to be inspected clean periodically. PPW recommended a backflow preventer, more so not protecting, per se, the cities, but I have a concern that that area is subject to the stormwater system backing up.
Right.
And I used to live right around the corner. I used to live in my own place for fifteen years, and those manholes will blow right off on microverse.
Yeah.
So, I'm familiar with that, and, and basically, there's, Doug McDonald's position on it is, you know, this is for your own good, we recommend it. So...
Great.
Now, there's some detailing that you'd add to the plan, on the comments list, spot grades and stuff on the plan, so we'll adjust that as a construction plan.
Okay. Great. And just for the benefit of the public, I know there was a comment about stormwater. This project does require a stormwater management plan, and, and one of our stormwater requirements is that a new development not cause any additional water to drain off the site than currently does. And so, that's the, the sort of remedy is this, this stormwater management plan. If the system isn't functioning the way that it is supposed to, then there is an opportunity for the city to, to enforce, you know, this management plan, make sure the system is functioning properly. So, there's a mechanism in place to, to kind of, you know, make sure that, that just because there would be another structure on what is currently grass, that it wouldn't cause anybody else's basement to flood or anything else like that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that document basically references that you're, you're responsible to maintain. And if you don't, then the city can come in and assess you. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the standard document, if you don't use that.
So, we, you know, we had a comment about stormwater, so we're gonna make sure that, sure. We can, Emily has sort of a couple of other comments about design and...
It's, even though they're probably very small scaled right now, there's been a lot of thought put into that cornice. And I just wanted to give a, that cornice is done like thirty-six inches, that's not, that's, that's a big, massive trim, and it's all to scale one by eight, and the active stock crown, just didn't have it at a larger scale, because I didn't know what was required.
No, it's not, I see, I...
No, it's not, I see, I'm on an elevation, but there's no profile to get, you know, to compare it to the, you know, the representation. There's just, there's no profile of it, so I can't tell the depth.
It's slightly on the, I mean, can I, am I allowed?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's minimal on that. Now, if I was a person, maybe thought this got a little fussy.
Right. Which I'm, I mean, I think it's, it's tasteful and it's fine. It's, just based on the, what we went through. To me, this is similar. And so I think a similar amount of care should be taken with the details in this. And that was, I don't know if you know what project we're talking about yet, okay? So...
So would you want us to continue and have a new set of lines?
I don't, I don't know that we need to continue. I just, I, you know, if they honored this, I'm, I'm not a fan of the vinyl in this neighborhood. So I don't think it's in keeping with what's happening everywhere else.
You could also condition it, you know, see how that flies for the rest of the world.
Yeah.
I mean, because it seems like there's, you mentioned cost, which obviously that's a huge thing. I mean, when would you guys have a sense of when, when you know if you could, what siding you could use?
I don't think we can get into asking them what...
Well, no, we can't. Wait a minute, hold a second. Okay, I disagree. So firstly, because if you bring something up and then say, oh, but there's the cost. You mean, I can want you to do, like, because if you're, the applicant has sort of, they sort of said, promised great things, but then said, but there's a cost that can affect us. So you can either promise the great thing and then tell us what the cost is. Or don't promise us any of it and then we will say what we're going to say. But you can't have it both ways. And that's what they're having. So let's, like, first of all, that's, that is exactly what is happening right now. And that's why it's important to know, like, what, that's why I'm asking, well, when will you know? And I'm not saying that we have to say that the project can't go forward. But you can't say one and then say, oh, well, because I guarantee with my project, oh, well, that, I mean, just like what happened with the, with the, that low income project or the housing that we decided that didn't happen. Well, they just decided at the end that they just couldn't afford it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to know what we're agreeing to, is ultimately what you're saying.
Yeah, yes.
So what's guaranteed and what's possible depending on how things proceed from here?
Well, I think they, you know, to sort of shortcut it, you can say, this is what we want to see. You presented this plan and you have to implement it. And whatever the material is, is their decision, but it has to be as presented in the elevations and not the, not the photo of something that's similar.
If I may. I was, I wanted to do hard recording, that's going to hold this up. I just don't want to get to a point where I can't afford to do it at all and just scrap it. As far as to answer, I mean, your question, to get these plans together is fairly expensive. To get the full set of plans and involve an engineer, much more work, I believe, on Emily's part. And it's, and at that point, I could price it all out with the, probably a hundred miles and whoever I'm going to use. And then I can figure out how much it's all going to cost. Like I said, I want to do hard recording, I want to make it nice. That's going to hold this up. I'll just either have to make it work or I won't do it. I mean, that's reality.
So are you saying you'd be comfortable if we conditioned it?
If you condition it up, either build a project with it or just won't do it.
I just want to say, I'm still opposed to impose, to putting on that condition. I think it's a bad precedent. I don't think it's any of our business.
I just think it's not a precedent, though, but we've already done it. That's, that's what I'm falling back on. That this is very, this is very similar to what we did.
I think when we did that, that was a bad precedent.
Yeah.
If we do it now, I, this is my opinion. If we do it, if we impose it now, we certainly will feel more comfortable doing it next week or next month or the month after. And I don't think we should.
Well, I think, well, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Alan. I do think that that's, that is, it's important for us to remember that this is, that we're having a conversation with the applicant. That we aren't the central business architecture review board. That we don't have the authority to impose something or deny a permit based on somebody's, you know, refusal to do X, Y, or Z. Or, you know, but, but I think in this case, because there's been back and forth with the architect and the applicant. And there's, and it's something the applicant was already considering. And it isn't, it isn't setting up a precedent that we think that this is now part of our purview on every project. I mean, I don't feel that way. But I do think that, like, from my perspective, if it were a trade-off between, you know, you had X amount of money to do the project with Hardy Board. And it were, any unit were 100 square feet smaller, you know, and we'd say, yes, I'd rather see a slightly smaller building with nicer materials than maximizing the square footage, for example, you know? So I don't, I don't think anybody here feels that we now kind of have this new authority to kind of, you know, engage in these design considerations.
No, but I think special permit allows us to have a conversation.
And I think going back to the Shaw's Motel, you know, some people think that came out great.
Some people have different opinions, but specific to vinyl siding versus cementitious, I look at that, see, we got that right. It certainly looks to me visually a lot better than it would have if that was vinyl sided. And so now I look at this in a similar light and say, we have that opportunity based on precedent. And so, and the applicant is willing to do it. So I would say, I'd be in favor of making it, approving and making that a condition.
Why should we ever approve a project with vinyl siding?
Well, a lot of times it's, it's not in our purview. It's a site plan review, they need to set back.
Anytime we can. Wouldn't the same thing apply?
Well, if it's in keeping with, in the neighborhood.
One thing that just jumps out at me here is there, I don't, I don't think on Gothic Street, there's another vinyl sided building.
I mean, next door, it was at 64, I mean, it's a, it's a big mass, but it's all painted and it's, you know, it's wood, I think it's wood. And so to me, it's not, that's what, that's the genesis of that, that vinyl siding isn't in keeping with what's in the neighborhood. And so, and then on top of that, what we did at Shaw's Hotel, I think, you know, a painted product, cementitious or whatever, wood or whatever, would be more in keeping with, and would be more inclined to approve.
Yeah, I don't think we're making a judgment call about vinyl being terrible in all contexts in all neighborhoods. But in this particular context, we're looking at asking a character if the neighborhood, it helps us meet those goals and meet other goals of the city within building housing downtown, which we want to do if this were out somewhere else. Where there are a bunch of those vinyl houses, then we probably wouldn't there. And it would be appropriate to condition it because then it wouldn't be in keeping with the neighborhood.
Right.
There is a vinyl sided house right beside it. The White, the White House is vinyl sided.
It's vinyl and it's vital.
Close enough, three stories. If it makes it easier, I can just let them on proposal to do Hardy Board.
Mr. You didn't know it?
Thank you.
He stretched his arm long, he's giving them two partners.
How late can we stay? What's the parking spaces?
Lock the doors and...
And somebody brought up the issue of the curbs. I'm assuming that that would be, I mean, that we're gonna, I'm assuming that we're going to require those sidewalks anyway. And that the curbs would be a part of those. That's DPW's recommendation, is that right?
Right, well, so in the application, they, they're showing replacement of the Gothic Street segment with the granite curb. That's the standard in the city. Also, there's a non-compliant ADA ramp at the corner. So they are showing that. And then they were just showing patchwork or a section up by the driveway to replace on the Trumbull side. So I think that it, so this is really just about the gap between the corner and the driveway. And then on the other side of the driveway going...
And so is that gap sidewalk only or sidewalk and curb on Trumbull?
Well, there's a tree belt on the Trumbull side, so it would really just be sidewalk.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the granite curb, per se.
Except at the driveway entrance, that would be...
So how many parking spaces are proposed?
There are seven spaces.
So that would mean, by my estimation, I've seen the place every day for a long time. It, the maximum they have in the existing house is five right behind it.
Right.
And so that would be two more for...
Behind what is proposed to be built. So further away from Trumbull Street.
Two more assigned for three apartments or condos.
No, no, no.
No, so of those seven, each of the apartments, that would, what would be three new ones plus the existing, would each have an assigned space?
When is space?
So there would be an assigned space for each residential unit. And then those remaining ones would be, also be used for commercial or for visitors at night or guests or what have you.
And that's despite the fact that there, in each of the new, new condos, there are three bedrooms.
Correct.
So that's probably at least nine people.
No, one, we don't know.
No, they're, they're going to have offices instead.
No, no, they will be residential, they would be residential.
An office in the bedroom.
Right, they wouldn't be able to act, to operate a commercial business out of them. They may be people who work from home, that's certainly possible. I think there are a lot of people in town who do that.
Could be a guest bedroom.
Right. Right. Chita, were you raising something else? Were you authorized other than second? Well, somebody just mentioned the curbing of Trumbull, but I can be addressed that. So, yeah, so this is not talking about granite curving the entire length.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to close the public hearing?
How do, do other board members feel like you have information in order to make a determination?
I do.
Would you like to make that motion now?
Move we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? I thought you were about to...
Yeah.
I know, this is a candidate on the bill. Would you like to discuss it?
So I don't know if you want me to run through, I incorporated some of the DPW comments and the conditions. I'd be happy to run through the ones that I would recommend to you. And obviously, there are others that you want to consider. Prior to issuance of building permit final plan should be submitted to include all conditions within or performed including sidewalk replacement to the clear from the one to one more bathroom. Plan should be signed and sealed by Massachusetts Register of P D. And so, DPW, at least 15 days prior to issuance of any construction permits. Construction plan should include specifications or post-grading of the parking lot, including the contours and spot elevation for the subsurface system. And location of inspection ports for the stormwater subsurface system. The applicant must record an executed stormwater operation maintenance inspection agreement. It includes a long-term operation and maintenance schedule as proposed for the system. Long-term stormwater maintenance program needs to be revised and approved by DPW. Was attachment A to this agreement. Blackback flow prevention valve should be installed. No dumpster should be located on-site. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, as offered by the applicant. Submission of a one-time payment of $3,000 to offset incremental traffic impacts created by the new project shall be submitted to the city. And then tree replacement shall be completed as a combination of onsite planting and payment to the city's tree replacement fund for a total of 21 acres. Of calendar. That's all I had.
I will make a motion to approve request by Patrick J. Melman Jr., Zoe Zechner for special permit major site plan to construct a three-story presidential, residential building with more than 20% reduction in parking at 76 Gothic Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 31B-188. With the following provisions, prior to issuance of a building permit, final plans should be submitted. Include all conditions herein. Include work to be performed, including sidewalk replacement for the entire frontage lengths of Trumbull and Gothic. You mentioned the one-time payment of $3,000, you mentioned that. Including the DPW comments, including the condo docs will stipulate only one parking space per unit. And including the use of cementitious siding or paintable siding versus the vinyl siding that was initially shown.
And something about the building, what is shown on these elevations?
Yeah, well, they're bound by that anyway, so, yeah.
Is there a second? All second. Krista, all those in favor? Opposed? Opposed or in favor, Alan? Abstained, abstentions?
Just a horse on the line. With great conflict, I vote for it.
Thank you. We have some additional business, so we just would like to chat if we have to do that outside.
Good luck.
You can just leave it there, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it. We have A and Rs and we have minutes.
I approve the minutes. I, I vote we take the minutes.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't think we did.
I don't think we did.
We approved them, just approved, just approved both of them.
Oh, it was last week.
It was last week, it was last week, yes.
We approved both of them.
Yes, we approved both.
So who did? Sam and Jana.
I have just...
And we have Alpharo Road A and R. We have, we have two A and Rs. This is at the old... Growing Hall. Clear malls. Lando Road and Brewery Lane. There's a little house with a tiny parcel.
Is this in Massachusetts?
It's a Mass State playing court. So they're carving off a piece that's not buildable on its own, but it'll be added to this house lot. So they have more room to expand it in the back. So it's, there's already, there's no new house lot that's being created. It's just swapping or selling land to be a better...
Would anyone like to move endorsement of that A and R?
So move.
Acceptance, is that what we...
Endorse.
Endorse. So move to second. Yuri?
Yeah.
All those in favor? You want to oppose?
One more. This one, actually, you already approved the one, it's a very small one.
I always get confused if it's approved...
So it's approval not required?
Well, like, why are we going through it if it's not required? Why can't you just say, yeah, it's fine?
That's what we're doing, we're endorsing that she can do that.
Yeah.
Oh, great. But you have to vote on the fact that it's not, that it's not, that it doesn't require a subdivision. Because either it has legal frontage, which is the standard, or it's just a transfer of land and there's no new building lot being created. In this case, I can certainly pass this around, but this is part of the Willard redevelopment site. You guys already endorsed the A and R for the, uh...
Solar.
Production, no marijuana production. This is the solar piece, actually. So the marijuana piece is over here, the A and R already came in. This one is, this would be the solar lot. It does not have frontage because frontage isn't required in this district for solar. But it's also carving off this piece that the solar developers are giving to the city for open space. So up, sort of abutting those homes that are on Ryan Road and Parsons Brook. So they're going to be, they need this A and R to do the deal with the city to give the land to the city. But also to start construction of the solar array. So that's what this one is.
So...
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yuri, all those in favor of endorsing? Anyone opposed?
No.
Sam?
I'm not opposed. So in favor, I was like, thinking a lot about it.
And that's all I know.
All right.
Good.
And who would like to make the best motion?
Make a motion to close this meeting.
And adjourn it?
Adjourn it.
Is there a second? Are you, all those in favor? You want to oppose?
No.